17, roll call please.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale. Isak. Excused and Guzekowski.
Here.
Please rise. Do we have any veterans in the audience? And you know what, you have the honor, please lead us in the pledge.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we do the approval of minutes, just a couple of housekeeping items. If we do have an exorbitant number of speakers tonight, we will limit the speaker discussion to three minutes if we have an overwhelming amount. I'd also like to recognize our city administrator, Andrew Vickers. Today is his birthday.
Hey!
On behalf of the council, happy birthday, Andrew.
No, no.
Doug's due 50. I was just informed of that.
I shared with them.
Happy birthday, Doug.
Whoa, there's a shot.
Well, either way, happy birthday to both of you. Approval of minutes, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Guzekowski, I'll make a motion to approve minutes from 5:16, 17.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item number four in the public hearings, it's a rezone conditional use, a request by Kelly Gallagher for Self-Storage Ventures LLC to rezone the properties at 275 East Drexel Avenue from B2 Community Business to LM1 Light Manufacturing, conditional use permit for self-service storage facility. Who is taking that one tonight? Oh, you got it.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request by Kelly Gallagher, Self-Storage Ventures LLC, to rezone the properties at 275 East Drexel from B2 Community Business to LM1 Light Manufacturing with a conditional use permit for a self-service storage facility. Applicant is Kelly Gallagher, Self-Storage Ventures LLC. Property owner is Acorn 6A Drexel Real Estate LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is May 11, 2017.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Doug Seymour, I'm the Director of Community Development, and this is the first of several public hearings this evening, this being a public hearing, a request by Kelly Gallagher of Self-Storage Ventures LLC to rezone the property 275 East Drexel Avenue from B2 Community Business to the new LM1 Light Manufacturing District with a conditional use permit for a self-service storage facility. Just as a bit of brief history, the LM1 Light Manufacturing District was recently approved by the common council, and self-storage facilities are or do require a conditional use permit in that zoning district. As proposed, the facility would consist of one 52,000 square foot two-story climate-controlled building on the north and five non-climate-controlled, single-story buildings south of that. The Plan Commission has reviewed this request, they have recommended to the council that the rezoning and conditional use permit be approved, subject to the imposition of conditions and restrictions which are attached to your staff report. This is a public hearing, I would request that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to rezone the property 275 East Drexel Avenue with a conditional use permit for self-service storage, to fill out an appearance form, hand it up to the city clerk, and once your name is called, please address to the podium and proceed to address your comments and questions to the common council.
Thank you very much, Doug. This is a public hearing, we'll make three calls. First call. Second call. Third and final call. Okay, we will close the public hearing, and we will move on to item number five. Ordinance approving the rezon of the property at 275 East Drexel Avenue. Questions or comments? Steve?
I was going through the minutes of the Plan Commission, and of course, I'm trying to find it, where it was talking about that sidewalk that's going to be practically non-useable once the property is built with the security fence. And somewhere in the minutes here, it talks about young children, okay, they go to Wendy's and Culvers. You have to the developer to regulate the construction zone, and then talking about working with the city to get rid of that sidewalk. I guess my question is either Mike or Doug, is at what point or what procedures can we start if that sidewalk is deemed just useless? When can we get that taken care of so that the neighbors don't have any concerns?
We could certainly, at the direction of the council, initiate a vacation of that.
You need me to make that specific request? Or how do we?
No, I think, I think, no, the intent, I think we'll, you know, we can certainly follow up on that.
Okay, I mean, I understand that once the construction is done, I mean, you'll have all the final parameters with how much of it is, how far back you go and stuff like that, so that'd be nice, thank you. Other than that, I have no other questions.
Comments? Anyone else for comment? Okay, seeing none, motion.
Kurkowski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2852, approving the rezoning of the property at 275 East Drexel Avenue from B2 Community to LM1 Light Manufacturing with a conditional use permit for a self-service storage facility.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye. Good luck.
Mayor, I was, just make a comment in my motion, I was reading from the item number five, and it didn't say "community business," so if that makes it, the word was omitted, so it's on the agenda but not on the...
City Attorney. We're good?
Okay, just making sure.
Item five, consider an ordinance number 2852 rezoning the property, oh, I'm sorry, we're on six, we're flying right along. Request by Judith Fisher for agility possibilities for a conditional use permit allowing a dog training and grooming and daycare facility, dog daycare facility at properties at 400 West Rossin.
Public hearing number two is to consider a request by Judith Fisher, agility possibilities for a conditional use permit allowing a dog training, dog grooming, and dog daycare facility on the property at 400 West Rossin Avenue, tenant spaces 446 and 448 West Rossin Avenue. The applicant is Judith Fisher, agility possibilities. Property owner is Industrial Investments, Inc. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is May 11, 2017.
Thank you. Judith Fisher of Agility Possibilities is requesting approval of this conditional use permit that would allow for a dog training facility within two suites totaling 6,600 square feet of the existing multi-tenant building at 400 West Rossin Avenue. Just as a bit of information, dog training, dog grooming, and dog daycare facilities are all conditional uses within the LM1 Manufacturing Zoning District, which is the base zoning for the property. This business would provide dog training classes within that lease space, there would be no outdoor activities, storage, or display of merchandise. No dogs would be housed, boarded, or sold or offered for sale, they would all be required to enter and exit the facility on a leash, and there would be a pet relief area outside in the grassy area near the building's drive-in door. Cleanup would be responsibly the pet owner, but would be monitored by the business owner. The Plan Commission again has reviewed this request for a conditional use permit for the dog training facility, and they have recommended the common council that it be approved, again, subject to the imposition of the conditions and restrictions as listed in your staff report. Again, this is a public hearing, same deal, if you'd like to appear, please fill out the appearance form and hand it up to the city clerk, and when your name is read, proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council.
Again, we will make three calls. This will be the first call. Second call. Third and final call. Okay, we will close the public hearing. Item eight. Seven, excuse me, boy, I am off on my numbers. We will consider the ordinance 2853 for the conditional use permit for the dog grooming and dog training and dog daycare facility at the property at 400 West Rossin. I'll open it up to the council for questions, comments. Okay, seeing none, motion.
Kurkowski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2853, authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for dog training, dog grooming, and a dog daycare facility for the property at 400 West Rossin Avenue, tenant spaces at 446 and 448 West Rossin Avenue.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item number eight, consideration of conditional use permit for an indoor commercial recreation facility at 440 West Bell Court.
Public hearing number three is to consider a request by Gerard Maggie, SPG MBS LLC, for a conditional use permit for an indoor commercial recreation facility, fitness and martial arts center on the property at 440 West Bell Court. Applicant is Gerard Maggie, SPG MBS LLC. Property owner is Liberty Lane LLC. Samuel Dickman. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is May 11, 2017.
Thanks. As stated by the city clerk, the request is for an indoor commercial recreation facility, in this case, fitness and martial arts center within Suite 500 of the existing multi-tenant building at 440 West Bell Court. Again, indoor commercial recreation facilities are considered conditional uses in the LM1 Manufacturing Zoning District. The specific proposal is for the facility to be run by Rock Athletic, which provides cardio kickboxing, Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, self-defense, cardio boxing, yoga, boot camp, and similar fitness programs out of that facility. The Plan Commission has reviewed the request, they have recommended to the council that it be approved, again, subject to the imposition of conditions and restrictions, public hearing is now open.
Thank you. Once again, we will make three calls. Excuse me. First call. Second call. Third and final call. We'll close the public hearing, move on to item nine. It is consideration of ordinance 2854, approving conditional use permit for the indoor commercial recreation facility of Fitness Martial Arts Center at the property at 440 West Bell Court. Questions, comments from the council? Seeing none, motion.
Oracle, make a motion that the council adopts ordinance 2854, authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for an indoor commercial recreation facility, Fitness and Martial Arts Center on the property of 440 West Bell Court.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 10, consideration of conditional use, requested by Kenneth Crosby for another, for Unity Fitness and Training, for a conditional use permit for an indoor commercial rec center on a property located at 9801 South 13th.
Public hearing number four is to consider a request by Kevin Crosby, Unity Fitness and Training for a conditional use permit for an indoor commercial recreation facility, fitness center on the property at 9801 South 13th Street. The applicant is Kevin Crosby, Unity Fitness and Training. Property owner is 13th Street Oak Creek LLC, St. John Properties, Inc. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is May 11, 2017.
Thank you. Again, another request for a conditional use permit for an indoor commercial recreation facility, in this case, Kevin Crosby from Unity Fitness and Training, requesting approval of the CUP for a fitness center within the 2,700 square foot suite of the existing multi-tenant building at 9801 South 13th Street. The proposal is for the facility to be run by Unity Fitness and Training, they provide personal training and CrossFit training services. There's information about the hours of operation. Again, the Plan Commission has reviewed this use, and they have recommended to your council that it be approved, subject to the imposition of conditions and restrictions. Just in general, I mean, a step that the council took, I think, a year or two ago, in making these types of commercial recreation facilities allowable in some of our older manufacturing districts and manufacturing buildings, I think was a wise move, and one that opened up these, some of these buildings to new uses, keeping them active and profitable as far as the taxes are concerned. If there are any questions or comments, please again, fill out an appearance form and proceed to address the council once your name is read.
Thank you, Doug. Again, we will make three calls. First call. Second call. Third and final call. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to item number 11. It is the ordinance for 2855, approving the conditional use permit for an indoor commercial recreation facility, fitness center at the property at 9801 South 13th Street. Discussion, questions? I have one. Steve?
I noticed on this one and some of the other ones, that it's notated that the properties are not in a TIF district, and then some are in a TIF district, so when they're not in a TIF district, I'm okay with, I have no question about that, but how does it affect it when it's in a TIF district with regards to the businesses and the TIF district?
Well, certainly, and the reason I do that is just to highlight some of the things that are happening both inside and outside of the TIF districts, because there still is a lot happening outside of a TIF district, so I think that, one thing I wanted to bring to your attention as part of the staff reports, but if it is within a TIF district, the lease certainly contributes towards the valuation of the building, and the valuation of the building contributes to the assessed value, and to the extent that there's a positive increment in the assessed value, that contributes to the success of the district.
Thank you. Seeing nothing else, motion.
Guzekowski, I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance 2855, approving conditional use permit for an indoor commercial recreation facility at the property at 9801 South 13th Street.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 12, consider another conditional use permit. Consider a request by Joe Toski, Villa Healthcare, for a conditional use permit for a skilled nursing facility at the properties at 8432 South 27th Street to become 2,700 West Hanadel Boulevard. Catherine?
Public hearing number five is to consider a request by Joe Tocotsky, Villa Healthcare, for a conditional use permit for a skilled nursing facility on the property at 8432 South 27th Street to become 2700 West Hanadel Boulevard. Applicant is Joe Tocotsky, Villa Healthcare. Property owner is the Villa at Oak Creek Realty LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is May 11, 2017.
Thank you. The council may recall back in 2015, the city approved a conditional use permit, again, requested by the same applicant, for a skilled nursing facility on the same property. And nursing home facilities are considered conditional uses in the LM1 multifamily zoning district, and due to a number of circumstances, the project stalled and the conditional use permit expired. The applicant has since therefore resubmitted for conditional use approval. There have been some minor changes made since 2015, however, the conceptual site plan which you see before you this evening, still depicts a one-star facility. The size of the facility has been slightly reduced to about 75,000 square feet, but the proposed number of units has risen to 80 from 72, a reduction of to 120 beds from the original proposal of 138 beds. However, roughly a 12,000 square foot addition to the north for hospice care of 15 units and 24 beds is new to the proposal. The overall proposed number of units is well within the density limitations of the LM1 zoning district for efficiency and one-bedroom apartments. The Plan Commission also has reviewed this request, and they have recommended that the conditional use permit be issued for a skilled nursing facility, again, subject to the conditions and restrictions attached to your staff report. Again, any comments or questions, please fill out an appearance form, once your name is called, please address the common council at the podium, thank you.
As Doug stated, it is a public hearing, we will make three calls. First call. Okay, ma'am, just come on up to the podium. First things, we'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Teresa Casperzak, 8437 South Cortland. And the way I'm looking at this, the parking lot that would be in the hospice care probably is going to face my bedroom and my living room, and that's probably a 24-hour lighting thing for employees, I would assume.
It will have, by code, it will have parking lot lights, correct. They will be shaded to keep the light from straying off the property, so it should be shielded, and there should be proper cutoffs. Am I explaining that correct, Mike?
That's correct. The code requires certain foot candles at the property line, so light pollution measures.
Okay, it just looks a little closer than I would have liked. Thank you.
Thank you. Second call. Third and final call. Please approach podium. Name and address, please.
Grant Reggino, with Direct Supply Eptura, 6767 North Industrial Road in Milwaukee. I'm the architect for the project, and I think there might be another slide that will show all the landscaping that will buffer to the neighbors. If it's, yeah, the, yes, that slide, you can see that there's a lot of new landscaping going in, in addition to the cut-off slate fixtures that we're going to be installing.
Thank you for that information. Ma'am, I hope that also help kind of make you feel at ease that they're going to do what they can to block that. Second call, third and final call. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we will move on to item 13. It is to consider the ordinance 2856 for approval of the conditional use permit for the skilled nursing facility at 8432 South 27th Street. Now open it up for questions or comments from the council.
Just have a couple of questions.
Greg?
The driveway along the back of the facility, is that, do you know if that's used for, is that an employee driveway, is that EMS driveway, is that, you know what that's used for?
Yes.
You need to be on the mic, sir.
Can I restate my name?
Uh, no, we're okay.
It's meant that the public entrance would be on the left, as you look at the image, and so the main entrance would be where the circle drives, the main entrance to the hospice would also be accessed from that side, and yes, the right is a service drive mainly, and fire protection, you know, for the fire department access.
And deliveries. Deliveries will also come in that way.
You know, if, is that like an EMS thing, if ambulances are coming in that way at night, are they, are they allowed to cut the lights, sirens, that type of thing, are they going to be?
My understanding is that the owner wishes to deliver patients who are immobile to the skilled nursing facility via ambulance at the front door.
Okay.
If there is an emergency that can't be avoided, I guess that will be, I guess, an operational thing.
Okay, but the plan is through the front, so, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, motion.
Oracle, make a motion to adopt ordinance 2856, approving a conditional use permit for a skilled nursing facility for the property of 8432 South 27th Street.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item 14, code amendment, consider a request to recreate Section 17.0808 Subsection F, adding requirements for architectural element lighting and to repeal and recreate Section 17.0706H regarding window sign regulations. Catherine?
Public hearing number six is to consider the creation of Section 17.0808 SubF, adding requirements for architectural element lighting, and to repeal and recreate of Section 17.0706 SubH regarding window sign regulations. Date of notice is May 11, 2017.
Thank you. LED strip lighting of windows has grown in popularity over the last few years, and we've all seen it throughout Oak Creek and throughout, we traveled throughout southeast Wisconsin. And last February, staff presented to the commission a proposed change to the lighting code regarding exterior lighting regulations. And at that time, the Plan Commission directed staff to research the possibility of prohibiting this type of lighting in the city, but chose not to pursue amending the lighting code restricting how these exterior LED strip lighting units are displayed. Again, this issue is not unique to Oak Creek, several surrounding communities also face the same concern regarding the strip LED lighting in their business districts. So staff, after researching that and discussing with the Plan Commission, has proposed the attached language in the ordinance to regulate the exterior use of LED strip lighting, and that to kind of characterize the concern is that they're being used more so as signage rather than as lighting, and as such, staff, through its research, is proposing, and the commission is proposing, to really regulate that as signage. So the new section of code would state that non-illuminated window signs shall not be subject to the limitations on number of signs. However, internally illuminated window signs shall be limited to two signs. Permanent, non-seasonal LED strip lighting, which frames all or portions of a window, and which serves to draw attention to or otherwise advertise the business within, shall not be permitted unless approved by the Plan Commission as part of the site and architectural review process. So we're not going after the person who's got Christmas lights up in their windows at good Christmas time, but it's really trying to regulate what is perceived as using LED strip lighting more so as a sign rather than architectural light and accent lighting. The commission has reviewed the proposed amendment, they have recommended to the council that it be adopted.
Thank you, Doug. This is a public hearing. We will make three calls. First call. Second call. Third call. Okay, we will close the public hearing and go on to item 15, the ordinance 2815, repealing and recreating Section 17.0706H regarding window signs regulation, creating Section 17.0808F, adding requirements for architectural element lighting. Discussion, questions from? Mayor? Steve?
Well, I would say about, two months or so ago, I talked to Doug Seymour about the lights that are in the windows of some of the businesses in the city, because I had been receiving calls and emails complaining about how, I think politely I'll say, undecorative those lights have been, or are. So I talked to Doug, and I said, hey, what can we do about this, because I tend to agree with the people that are complaining about them. And he said that they were going, they were working on this, and however, this new ordinance doesn't really address any of the concerns that I had with Doug, and I'll share that with the council. The fact that some of the businesses that have these lights inside their windows, keep them on 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so at 3:00 in the morning, as you drive past a certain establishment, these bright white lights are illuminating the parking lot, and I think they're a distraction. Then I see some of the lights are not working, they're not functional, they're falling down off whatever brackets they're in the light, in the windows. So my suggestion at the time was to ban the lights outright, just not even allow them in the city. And then, for the businesses that have them, they could keep them so long as they maintain the same business that they are, but if they fell into disrepair, say if one particular side of the window burned out or whatever, they weren't going to be allowed to replace them, they had to go. And then, in the interim, at least tell these businesses that they can't have them on 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I mean, if you're going to allow these businesses to have these lights, then they should only be on during their business hours. And my concern is that this ordinance addresses none of those concerns. So, I'd like to ask... So I'd like to ask, how can we address those concerns? Because we are taking care of not letting businesses put the lights in, but we're not talking about the businesses that have them. And, okay...
Couple of things. I mean, the use of these lights is not, or was not, illegal. So the fact that businesses have used them, they were certainly able to do so under the existing code. The fact that should the council adopt this ordinance change, they would be considered to a certain extent legal nonconforming, and we'd have to, and there are some, there's some case law with respect to how things of a more temporal nature are considered legal nonconforming and amortizing a certain percentage of their value. And, you know, I'm not prepared to get into that right now. But the commission, in its review, certainly saw moving forward that this is a situation that needed to be addressed. And Dan, I don't recall what the discussion was with respect to the timing of those lights. But it would be challenging to only limit the operation of LED lights to a certain, and interior LED lights to a certain timeframe without making it uniform across the board. I think that'd be my concern. I don't think it's impossible, but I think that we would want to be treating all interior lighting in a similar nature. And our thought was, and I think the commission's thought was, that moving forward, it's going to be a commission decision as to whether or not to allow these types of lighting. And that the individuals who are utilizing these lights at the present time, you know, do have those types of legal nonconforming rights to utilize that kind of facility. So it's not, you're right, it's not addressing your concern about hours of operation, but I don't know that it's prudent to do that by singling out one type of lighting source and an internal lighting source for that. I'd be happy to discuss that if that's something the council wanted us to pursue, but I'm not sure, I'm prepared to include that as part of the ordinance this evening.
Well, I'm, we're talking about something new. I mean, these LED lights are, have showed up in the last couple of years. They haven't been around forever. So we're now addressing a new phenomenon of, hey, everybody, look at my business, I got these bright white lights and they're on 3:00 in the morning. So I feel that if we're regulating these lights with the fact that now you can't have them, we can certainly grandfather, if that's the term you want to use, by telling these folks, you're not allowed to have them anymore, but you can because you got them already. But here are the conditions upon which you can have them. At the very least, you gotta turn them off when you close your business. I don't see how unreasonable that is.
It may not be unreasonable, and it may actually be in the public's interest, but I think that's something that, again, the individuals or businesses that have been utilizing these lights legally have a certain expectation, they will continue them, using them as they have in the past before this ordinance was passed. And I don't know if you wanted to comment on that or not, but I think, again, I wouldn't be prepared to necessarily just put that in the ordinance this evening without looking at the ramifications and how that affects other interior lighting.
And just to kind of bring you up to speed, when we did discuss this at planning and we discussed it on two separate occasions, if I remember correctly, the intent was not to punish those that were grandfathered in because these lights kind of took off across the city. What we wanted to do was, was put a limit on what was going to go in and stop it at a certain point and limit it. Just so you're all familiar with the lights we're talking about, we're talking about those rope-type lights, lights that are LEDs that certain businesses frame their windows with, or maybe the roofline of their building, so you can get a visual picture of that. We didn't find that appealing for the city. We wanted to cut it off by the same way. We didn't want to be punitive towards an existing business that was ready using it. But by the same token, as our electrical inspector, as we took it, would go in there and they'd be out for repair, it's kind of like once the business was done with them, they'd be done with it too. So again, if they fell out of compliance or the business changed hands, they'd be done. Now, I don't know exactly how many businesses utilize these lights, but it was enough to draw attention to get the ordinance moving forward. Why they specifically didn't address the time, Steve, I can't really answer if, again, it was for lack of not wanting to be punitive on a grandfather type issue, or if quite frankly, they just, you know, overlooked.
I don't think it's punitive if you're going to allow them to keep them because they're being so-called grandfathered in. That's not, we're allowing them to keep them. It seems reasonable to say, when you close your doors, turn off your lights.
But again, they never operated under that rule, and now you're asking them to operate under that rule.
Yes, exactly. Asking them to do that.
So again, I think they were maybe possibly looking at it as being punitive. Chris, can you shed anything? What's your memory?
Well, I was just, I was looking back at our notes from that meeting, and I kind of brought this discussion up a bit in page 204. If you guys looked down at, I inquired about how the cities are doing business and using, that are currently using LED lights, and how do we, you know, propose to fix this type of thing? And you can see the responses there by Pete Wagner. Again, right now, they're trying to have, my understanding is to have this at least in place so that going forward, it gives us something to stand on. Yes, they are going to be grandfathered in, but how do you control it or modify it is going to, it's a balancing act. So, but at least Pete felt that going forward, he would be able to work with some of those people that maybe, I don't want to say abusing it, but, you know, they look at it differently than you do. Doesn't answer, you know, your questions specifically about turning them off or going back to old businesses.
I'm only trying to address concerns from residents that don't feel that they need to, well, apart from not liking them, and we're dealing with that with the ordinance, but dealing with the fact that they're on, you know, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning.
I'm getting the same thing too as well.
And it's not a 24-hour store.
Right. My suggestion would be you could be this part of the ordinance, and if you wanted to amend this ordinance once again, you could take it up through planning again, through discussion on time limits after we consult with legal.
Melissa, any comments?
Sure. I would say a couple of things. Alderman Kukowski, this is something, I mean, you've certainly raised the issues that a number of us have heard in the past many months with this new genesis of lighting. There are a couple of other considerations that I think we should, as staff, will take a look at, certainly. I think there's a lot of deference in terms of the legal nonconforming use, the fact of the grandfathering, so to speak. However, I think that on balance, my recommendation would be if the council is considering moving forward with the directive to staff, as we've discussed, we'll certainly consider, we'll certainly continue looking at these considerations. But at least this gives some teeth into what parameters we have moving forward in terms of LED lighting. So it would be my recommendation, all told, that this would at least give some footing in terms of guidance in our code to try to start somewhere. In addition to that, I think that there are some concerns in terms of sign issues or signage that is a bigger issue than just the lighting. So that's one of the considerations. I won't get into that tonight. But I think the bottom line is just the practicality of it, what you're saying, how do we address that? And I guess part of the discussions over the past many months, this was before plan commission some time ago, and actually has, a couple of people have commented a couple of times. But to that end, I think that there's been consideration given to the fact that certain of these businesses will not always perhaps be in the same tenant spaces, perhaps using the same lighting, perhaps if on an inspection, they're not operational, then there could be some other consideration in terms of a violation or code compliance or something of that nature. So I would submit that at this point, in my opinion, it would be prudent to move forward with the ordinance if that's what the council believes is appropriate, to at least try to get some footing around this issue. We'll continue to look at it to see what additional pieces we can add to it.
I am in favor of the ordinance. I just wanted to go that one extra step with regards to, so I would request that the appropriate city departments look into a further amendment of this to include the hours of operation with regards to these lights, if we're able to do so, then. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, motion.
Well, I did all the talking, so I guess I'll, Kukowski can make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2857, repealing and recreating section 17.0706H, modifying the regulations for window signs and creating section 17.0808F that regulates LED strip lighting on exterior of buildings.
Kuzikowski, you'll second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kukowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Before we hit new business, I would just like to welcome all the new businesses that we just went through the hearings and approved. It's nice to see people coming into Oak Creek. So with that, we'll go to new business. Item 16, a resolution adopting city, the city of Oak Creek Strategic Action Plan for 2017, 2020. Andrew, are you taking that?
I will, mayor, thank you. Just to launch it, I know we have a real brief PowerPoint presentation. First, I want to thank, because there's not enough slides to devote, enough attention to the work of the Strategic Planning Committee. The Strategic Planning Committee really ushered in the process. That was a cross-section of employees from many departments in management, middle management and non-management positions, who really articulated the RFP process, the process, the public process that was assumed for this, and we'll get into all of this. There was also citizen representation on the Strategic Plan Committee. The work that had been done by that committee to evolve the plan, inform the plan, and save money on the process of creating the plan, I would say, really is awesome. They did an awesome job. So I wanted to thank that group specifically right off the bat, because we would not be in the mode of approval tonight without that group. But what we have before the council this evening is our first strategic action plan for the city of Oak Creek since 1989. We were a much different community in 1989, and it's not that we didn't, you know, take deliberate actions and have deliberate policy discussions or anything along those lines, but we didn't have it written down somewhere, and we didn't have a living, breathing document that we could refer to as our policy and initiative guideposts as directed by the decision-makers of this community who represent the taxpayers of the community and the residents of the community. So this was a very long process. City attorney Carl let me know that I think we were contemplating the RFP award for Novak Consulting Group last June. So this is, this is a year, and probably the Strategic Action Plan Committee were busy at work vetting out that process. So I want to go through a brief presentation. I will keep this really brief. As I know, the council is very familiar, but for the folks in the room and the folks at home, when we look at the strategic plan, we really work from, as this presentation will, we work from generality to specificity. So the strategic pyramid really shows the steps of the process that we went through in creating the vision, what we want to be, the mission, why we exist, the values, what we believe in. And then as we grow to more specificity, the critical success factors, the goals, and then the actual action plan, which is the very implementable plan before you for approval this evening. I wanted to touch base a little bit more on the process in detail because it was a good one, and it was a comprehensive one. So the background for this strategic plan process, some of the footing that the strategic plan has is in the Cobalt survey. That was a community-wide survey that I believe the community has used two times now, and it is very comprehensive in nature, and we've had great participation on that Cobalt survey from the taxpayers and residents of this community. So using that as, you know, a huge source of information, along with our environmental scan of our community in terms of data, that's really the data, what we are as a community from a data perspective, helped inform and gain some background on the plan. The, after the, in leadership team meetings, we also did with the department managers and others, a SWAC analysis. Some of you are familiar with the SWAC. This is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and in this case, challenges for the community. Obviously, what are we looking to try to improve? What are we looking to try to overcome? What are we looking to capitalize on that we do well? The factors of the community that we're trying to lever and capitalize on. The, just to be, just to give you an idea, there was roughly 600 responses to that Cobalt survey. That's pretty impressive for a community even of the size of the city of Oak Creek. We also did, and this was an important cog in the wheel also, and something that you'll see in the action plan itself is something we want to do more of, and that's vertical communication. That's a bad way to put it. More communication across the departments and staff and employees of the city. They really helped craft the mission, vision, mission, vision, values and the critical success factors which shaped the strategic plan. Again, additional public input, other than garnering what we could outside of the Cobalt survey, we did engage the public in two, three community meetings as well as an online platform that was utilized. Those events occurred throughout the months of November and December of last year. Well, the council's represented, the council's elected to represent the interests of the taxpayers, most importantly, and keep the taxpayer safe, of course, but we engage, I think, maybe more so than some would have liked, given schedules and those types of things. But we really wanted the council to own what it is that we were arriving at in terms of the framework for our strategic plan. So what we did in our first council retreat is we had the council and the department managers hone the mission and vision for the community, and then we began prioritizing. We had an initial council retreat where we had a few ideas out there, so we thought we might have a second council retreat, and there was some 138 initiatives that were very important to everybody. So the challenge was, through a series of small and large leadership team meetings, was to bring that into a workable and achievable plan. All of those 100-plus initiatives, obviously, we had to make this plan achievable, and that's what we did in terms of prioritizing what all of your priorities were. I think we had on the order of five, maybe up to seven, large leadership team meetings to arrive at the, to arrive at the strategic action plan before you tonight. Again, now we'll work from the general to the specific and share with the folks at home, the folks in the room, as well as the council, again, what our vision is. We are Oak Creek, a dynamic regional leader connected to our community, driving the future of the South Shore. And our vision is that we are a dedicated organization providing high-quality services that positively impact Oak Creek residents, businesses and visitors. And then we have our organizational and community values there to the right, which include integrity, mutual respect, professional, accountable, commitment and teamwork. From that, we derived our critical success factors, and now we're getting into the meat and potatoes of the plan. And those critical success factors are before you, and I would note that we started with seven, but we had combined proactive leadership as well as inspired and aligned city government into one initiative, and you see it on there. From those critical success factors, we were then able to develop, again, through that large leadership team process and all of the input throughout the process, our strategic action plan. The council met last week in a working session to really hone in and finalize the interpretations of all of that input that the staff had made in the large leadership team meetings. So again, what we have is critical success factors, key initiatives under that, those critical success factors. And then each of those initiative statements have roughly five to eight, maybe a little more, maybe a little less, depending on which one. five to eight, maybe a little more, maybe a little less, depending on which one, critical or key objectives, which are very actionable items. We will do this, we will do that. And there's also then a process that's laid out to achieve each of the initiative statements. So as an example, our vibrant and diverse community, our vibrant and diverse cultural opportunities, a couple of those that stick out, we want to become a city well-known for successful special events and community gatherings. We want to bring our public together. We want folks from outside of the community to come to Oak Creek for all the cool stuff that we hope to help usher into this community by way of special events and community gatherings. You will see some of that again this summer in our inaugural year at doing some programming in DTS at Abba and Shain and other parks and amenities around the city. We also wanted to focus in on additional cultural and recreational opportunities for our senior population, and then one other cool factor, and we are that progressive community looking at populating pedestrian corridors with public art and sculpture. You see that initiative in the city of Milwaukee. It's taking off incredibly successfully so far. Second critical success factor, thoughtful development and prosperous economy. Obviously, some big, big things here, and I should take a step back and say, we wanted this plan to be not only something tangible and bold and big that we could bring to the community, and we have some of these specifically in this critical success factor, but we also wanted an internal organizational process improvement, organizational improvement document. I think we found a mixture of both. Obviously, we are establishing TID 13 at the lakefront. That is a significant economic development effort and a significant public, a public effort in terms of opening the lakefront to the public, which I know you folks have been hard at work at it, and many folks for decades before you. We want to look at also facilitating some sort of recreational center in the community to provide those amenities. And we also, and I'll get, I'm going to go into more detail on this one in particular later, we are designing and implementing a business retention and expansion program here in the city of Oak Creek. The first one, I think formally of its kind, and that is to ensure that, I guess backing up, any successful economic development platform has business and retention, business retention and expansion of existing businesses. That's where you get your growth. That is where you predominantly get your, you know, your net new job creation in your community, hopefully contributing to the wealth and population of your community. We want to make sure that the folks that have called Oak Creek Home for many years, many decades, are heard, and we are reaching out to them to make sure that their needs are met, that we understand their business, and that we can do whatever it is we can to facilitate their growth. And like I said, we'll get into that a little later as an example. It won't be a lot later, I promise. Third critical success factor, safe welcoming and engaged community. We want to take a look at our website as one key element there, and we also want to look at a process for welcoming in our new residents and community, and making sure they're engaged, making sure they're registered to vote, making sure that they know of the really awesome value proposition that the taxpayers get here in the city of Oak Creek. Next, we have inspired, aligned and proactive city leadership. We want to make sure that we are convening discussions and examining partnerships with other stakeholders in the faith-based sector, in the nonprofit sector, in the private sector, such that we are pulling the rope in the same direction in the community, providing that quality of life together in this community, and not particularly not duplicating efforts, but more supplementing efforts that already exist where we can. I think really importantly, too, is you'll see communication and engagement throughout this, but the specific one, increase the community, excuse me, frequency in communication and engagement among the staff and the council commissions and boards in the community, the decision-makers in the community. I don't think we would be able to do any of this without a critical success factor speaking to financial accountability. So some initiative statements we have here, most importantly, we want to really evolve the communication, again, that word, of our budget process, priorities and our fiscal challenges and opportunities and strengths internally and externally. So to the public, to our council, to the, probably most importantly, a little more attention given to articulating throughout the rank and file of the organization as to what we deal with at budget time and throughout the year. Lastly, quality infrastructure amenities and services. We want to look at a possible conversion to LED street lighting. That's not only, not only is there a technological advancement and capability in that regard that we pick up, but also a cost savings. We do want to focus in as a community on multimodal transportation strategies, and also look to supplement our annual road, road maintenance and bridge maintenance monies with some new options and new methods for exploring really maintenance and increasing the useful life of the assets that we do have in the community, just as a few examples. Just so I can round out and show you what I mean by we have initiative statements, and then we have actual objectives and furtherance of that. As an example, key initiative, design and implement a business retention and expansion program, just to give the folks at home the idea and the folks in the room the idea that is that are generated through the strategic plan that we will act on as a staff and direct resources to as a council and a staff, some of the examples of objectives. Obviously, we want to research what other BRE visitation programs do well in other economic development organizations, identify what key information we want to gain from the business leaders during these visits, develop a database to track actionable items and notable business information, articulate and record the goals of our BRE program, and provide additional opportunities for local business recognition and award programs. Those are concrete steps, and each of those initiatives that I very quickly went over all have key action steps associated with them, again, five to eight, maybe a little more, maybe a little less, that will be the direction you give by your adoption of the strategic action plan this evening to the staff, and we will speak back to this. So I know the council is very familiar with this document, but I thought it worthwhile, we were going to be creating this PowerPoint for the staff, as this will be communicated to the staff, that we provide that brief overview this evening prior to your adoption of the strategic action plan. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If there's anything you want, any more information on, of course, that's why we're here, so.
We do have one citizen wishing to speak.
Arden Dagnar, 85, 40, South Pennsylvania Avenue. This is a, a plan that in the past we depended upon the elected alterman to handle. Now, those days are gone because its city has increased in size and finances. However, there's some glaring omissions that you have failed to address. I understand, a year ago, we submitted a plan for a safe routes to schools program so that our children could actually utilize public sidewalks and other amenities as they travel, and additionally to those that are handicapped or even just the runners. Do they go to parks to do that? Not necessarily. So to me, this is a glaring omission that we're not addressing the needs of the schools, just as you have refused to address the bottlenecks that are evolving at various locations on our highways. Rasrosan Avenue with that development right on the corner with cul-de-sacs. We have also the problem that you want to place all kinds of, of market that all costs money. How many more people are we going to have to hire to do this? Or is this going to eliminate input at budget time? This is one of the setups that administrators always work on, is how they can forge a budget without any back, back problems. So I would look at this plan in the same plan, in the same way the Eretoropolis plan that you have seen that has been proposed. It was the most intricate-laid design plan. It very carefully said that we're going to eliminate hotels on College Avenue. Why can't this plan also, and I think that's probably the purpose, is to have a multi-year plan for improvements, and it takes years, especially with street construction. So it's a good start. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Dagnar. Appreciate those comments. Chris, do you have something? Anyone?
Yeah, Dan, I'll just want to make a comment. I wasn't involved in this strategic action plan, just coming on to the council, obviously, in April, but I have done some strategic planning work with other organizations within our community. At the wrap-up meeting where the strategic action plan was presented to city management members and the council, I made mention that what an impressive piece of work this was. In the audience this evening, Sig Tomkowsky, I know he's a community volunteer and representative that was instrumental in this plan, and I've worked with him previously on strategic plans for other organizations, and again, just great work by the city administrator, city managers, the common council, the firm that was hired out to help with the plan. The strategic plan, and Andrew, you said, since 1989, there has not been a, I guess, a framework or a roadmap for, you know, the future of our community, and this action plan certainly provides that. It's the roadmap. It's the instructions, I would, I would say, in layman's terms. You know how you, you'll buy, and I don't mean to disparage, a new business that comes into our community, IKEA, with, you want the directions and you want instructions on those directions so you can easily accomplish something? Well, that's what this strategic action plan is. It's instructions for how this city can move forward in the future. So again, just to, you know, my comment would be at what a job well done that this strategic action plan is. Encourage the community to take a look at it. Certainly, you see how exciting that the future of our community will be based upon the use of this plan, and when we get to the point, I certainly would highly encourage that the council would adopt, you know, or, yeah, pass the resolution that would adopt the Oak Creek Strategic Action Plan. So my comments.
Else? You know, I'm not going to belabor it. It's really a three-year plan with some milestones set out, so everybody's rolling in the same direction. Basically what it is, not only our staff, but the electives. Whether I'm here, or the seats change to my left or right, they have a template as to where we're going. I think it's a healthy thing to do. It was probably long overdue, and again, everybody's been thanked, but again, it was good open comments. We haven't abandoned sidewalks or safe routes to school, none of that. We're going to continue on our path, but we want to have a clear direction for the staff and for the electives as to which way we're headed, so.
Okay. Do a motion to adopt it. Well, then, Dukneak moves that the common council adopt resolution number 11828-060617, adopting the city of Oak Creek Strategic Action Plan 2017 through 2020. Mr. Kerkowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurick.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Item 17 is a resolution, number 11825060617, approving a special privilege permit submitted by ADK Designing. It's a man.
That one. I'll take that one, Mayor, thank you. I think the common council report is really clear in providing the history, but I'll just touch on a few key points in that. We, we have a unique form here in Drexel Town Square, and it was purposeful in the urban form that it takes. With that, there were a lot of changes to construction and design of buildings and their relationship with the public right-of-way, particularly with the zero setback type style buildings we have on Main Street and other places in DTS. With that, and I think with good forethought, in 2015, the staff and the council and the plan commission looked to adopt or amend chapter six of our ordinances to allow for things we knew would be coming, which would be structures, obstructions and the like in the right-of-way in Drexel Town Square. So we have our inaugural permittee here, hopefully, in that the Pizza Man Restaurant, Pizza Man Oak Creek, would like to utilize the special privilege permit for construction of a parklet outside of its, outside of its, outside of its restaurant here. That encroaches past the, you know, you'd think the typical sidewalk, and I don't mean encroach as a negatively connoted term either. It surpasses the sidewalk and extends past the curb to provide a really, really unique, cool vibe for resident dining and, you know, maybe drinking, too. So that's really what's before you this evening, is the applicant seeking to follow through on utilizing the special privilege permit designed for this type of use. We have taken several actions and furtherance of getting Pizza Man Squared away with their parklet, including a sidewalk dining permit, two premise changes for their liquor license, and then this action before you this evening. Along with the special privilege permit comes a maintenance services agreement, which is also included in the language of the permit that we've struck for this, and there's also proper indemnification and insurance requirements for the restaurant, given the parklet is in the public right-of-way. We're really excited about this. We had to put some structure and some detail to the rather conceptual, conceptual plan, commission action to approve the parklet in concept, and we think we've really done that. Many departments have taken a look at, at how we can do this in a safe and effective and hopefully swift manner for the applicant, knowing it was our, you know, first time handling this type of permit request.
Thank you, Andrew. Questions, comments from council? Alderman, Lurick?
As far as the actual plan for this, has there been a plan submitted as far as, I guess, what are they kind of looking at for barricading? Are they, I've seen garden boxes at some restaurants. I've seen concrete barricades put up. Is there specifics on what they're looking to do for this?
Looks like Mike's getting ready to field that one for you, Alderman, Lurick, so certainly defer to you.
So what you see on the screen really is just a architectural schematic of what the parklet is going to look like. We have seen very basic plans that were part of the overall build-out of Pizza Man, so really nothing more than a rectangle and then some details of like the planter boxes themselves, really on one or two plan sheets. We need to see more. We need to see more, and they have indicated that they are in the process of putting those together and getting those in for us to look at from a structural standpoint. But the graphic shows at least some detail such that the far south end of this parklet will be basically at the back of curb of the parking stalls that they are going to span over. So as far as barricading, it really is just the planter boxes and the railing section of the parklet itself. That did cause a lot of conversation on Plan Commission level. We've since talked that through with the architect and the applicant, and I believe have come to a degree of confidence in the safety of the configuration of the structure. And as our city administrator indicated, there is language for indemnification of the city for this structure in the right-of-way, and there will be submission of a certificate of insurance that is part of this permit application as well, which we have some of those documents, but not all. But we expect that we will have those in our possession shortly.
Mark Gregg?
Those would be conditioned on the permit issuance, so that's all inclusive in there, so we know we can't issue the permit without all of the conditions and restrictions as we're accustomed to.
Yes?
I'll just go back a little bit to Plan Commission, and when we talked surface the first time around, this, you know, looks like a really nice conceptual idea, and I think it does look nice, but I am still opposed to it from the standpoint that it's already tight out there to begin with. There's always going to be a safety concern that there's documents here, but I still don't know that all the answers are where we need to have them. Parking is at a premium at Drexel Town Square, and I know it's only a few parking spots, but it is still a few parking spots that now someone's got to park, you know, at Myers or someplace else. So it's a great conceptual idea. I just am opposed to it from that perspective.
Mayor?
Steve?
Mike, is this permanent? Could it be year-round, or is it seasonal?
This is seasonal. The application is for, well, originally, our tent was May 15 through October 15. Of course, we're past the May 15, but still looking at having it in place until mid-October, and then it gets disassembled and taken off-site.
Thank you. The only comment that I make, as I get from my daughters, that is a positive-vibe plan there, not unlike what you'd see in the Third Ward at State Street in Madison. So, you know, really, it promotes business development in that. And again, it just, like, my girls tell me, there's a positive vibe with that type of planner layout, and I understand the safety concerns. I guess we could check the record of the Third Ward and to see if there have been safety issues in that area over the last five years with the development of these little street-side, you know, dining areas or plazas.
Well, and I think it's, I know it's, again, I'm not opposing the idea. It's a really great idea. It's a winner, but again, safety, and the streets, too, to me, for whatever reason, don't seem to be nearly as wide as the Third Ward. So we got a lot, it seems as if it's a little tighter as you're passing through there, just with two cars, let alone, you know, potentially walking. So that's just my two cents. It is what it is.
I think one important piece of this is that with the sidewalk dining permit, the restaurant, the applicant, I guess in this case, is required to maintain a width on the sidewalk for pedestrian thoroughfare. I guess that's fair. So such that they're not walking around the parklet on the roadside to bypass that piece. So I think that is critical, and you can kind of see that even in the conceptual plan, the space there for that.
Just bringing up the speed. Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Are we able to review this every year? We are. Okay, because that's a consideration for me.
Good point.
You know, if it doesn't work, we need to pull the plug on it.
I know where I was headed.
Yeah, oh, okay. I'm sorry.
But no, go right ahead.
Yeah, another concern for me would be because Pizza Man is first in line, are we going to get more requests for the restaurants that are front the street? And what do we do in a situation like that? Is it just Pizza Man that gets this, or is everybody going to be entitled to extend their restaurant? That's...
It's a legit question. I mean, Bel Air already has an outdoor patio seating. It remains to be seen who may come in yet. Remember, when we designed this, we had no idea who the tenants would be, so amenities like this really weren't put in place. When they came to planning, it was conceptual. We knew we had some things to work out. Importantly, the parking was addressed, and I think most importantly, the safety aspect. And that's where we relied on the expertise of our staff to really look at the structure itself and what other communities are doing. But yes, I don't want to use the words trial and error. I'd like to say conceptual, to see how this works for this coming season, and it is an abbreviated season with the late start. So, you know, we'll get feedback from our police department, our fire department, our streets department, find out where the complications lie, and try to improve it. As far as if we grant it to any other business, say, Doug, if I'm not mistaken, they're going to come through planning, and that's going to be a case-by-case judgment called.
Well, certainly, and many of the tenant spaces, you mentioned Bel Air, and some of the ones that are not necessarily within Drexel Town Square, will have patio dining, and they aren't really in a position from a site plan perspective to take advantage or capitalize on that, nor would we, for instance, extend the same type of operational opportunity to those businesses along Howell Avenue. Although I will say, there are some in West Ellis that are on Greenfield Avenue, so that's...
You are correct.
So from that standpoint, it's a little bit interesting, but I think it's a very unique and very well-defined set of circumstances geographically, and certainly with the ability to, for the Plan Commission to review additional site plans for any new developments for the lots that remain, we would, I would hope, really focus on providing opportunities primarily off-street and in patios for this type of development, and really to preserve the limited parking that we do have. But if there are opportunities, again, to get that cool factor, to really give opportunities and experiences that traditionally have happened in Oak Creek, and still preserve our ability to safely operate within those streets, you know, it's up to the Plan Commission and the common council to take a look at that.
Anyone else? All right, motion. Oracle motion that the council adopt resolution number 11825-060617, approving the special privilege permit submitted for Pizza Man, 7974 South Main Street.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye. Item 18, it's to consider a motion to concur with a couple of mayoral appointments to celebrations and the police and fire commission. Discussion. Seeing none, motion, please.
Kuzikowski, make a motion to concur with the mayor's appointments as listed on the agenda.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
And just before we move on, I'd like to thank everybody that submitted applications or stepped up to provide their experience and time to serve on these commissions, because again, they're unpaid, they come in as their own free will and their own free time, the betterment of the community, so thank you to all. Item 19, vendor summary report. Ken's not here. Who's taking that one? Bridgette?
I can't make the motion.
You can't make the motion. Is there anything of interest on there we should be aware of?
I, easy one.
Mayor? Oh, go ahead, Steve.
I just want to point out for the benefit of Mr. Dagnar that item 2 is a payment to Community Design Group for professional services relating to the safe routes to school. So we're still working on it.
Seeing no further discussion, motion?
Owen will make a motion to approve the 2017 vendor summary report in the amount of $367,282.06.
Kuzikowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Item 20, treasurer, we have Barb Gukunberger with us tonight, and she's going to give you an informational summarized treasurer's report. Barb?
Thank you.
Yours?
Just very brief. We just have the balances for all of our banking and investment accounts. Beginning balance, just over $41 million. Ending balance, about $34.5 million, and this is for the month ending April 30. Tax collection for the month of April, about $790,000, or 1% of the tax levy. Just a note that approximately $4 million was paid out to the other taxing jurisdictions for our tax collections for February and March. And again, these balances, I just want to note that they're not all for general spending purposes. There are some, there's some funding that is allocated for special purposes, taxing our mental districts and so on. So, you have any questions?
Oh, you waited a long time for no questions.
That's okay. You're from the next two as well. We may get worth our while.
Seeing nothing on 20, we'll move on to 21, finance. It's a motion to enter into a contract with Eller's Investment Partners for investment advisory and custodial services. Barb?
Well, I'll let Bridgette take that one.
Bridgette, sorry.
That's okay. So for roughly the past 10-plus years, the city has been working with three different investment advisors or brokers for our investing needs. And over the past year, we ended up moving away from one of those individuals. So Barb and I picked up our conversation with Ken Heardeman from Eller's Investment Partners, which we've been having off and on over the past three or four years. So Ken is here tonight, if you have any questions. He was also at our last Finance Committee meeting a few weeks ago, gave the full spiel presentation. All of that's in your packet. I won't grace you with that entire presentation. It was a good one, but I won't make you go through that whole presentation, so I'll try to give a brief explanation of Ken Heardeman and Eller's Investment Partners. So Eller's Investment Partners is an independent registered investment advisor. So they provide the unique investment service options from planning all the way through to implementation and reporting of the investments. They seek out competitive bids. They don't hold an inventory or try to push the inventory that they have on hand, and they will seek direction from us in terms of what we're looking for in our portfolio, what type of maturity are we looking for, as well as abiding by the state statutes, which is required. So one of the options that we would have if we would work with Eller's Investment Partners would be to consolidate all of our custodial and safekeeping needs, which we currently have at another location right now. So that is an option. We aren't saying that we're going to do that tonight, but that's an option that could save us money. We are continuing to research that process. But EIP will give us consolidated reporting. So right now, we have three different reports for each of the investment advisors or brokers. Barb continues to work on those reports as well, but EIP would be able to give us a consolidated reporting, whether all of our funds were in one location. I think, quite honestly, one of the biggest selling points in working with EIP is their ability to provide an ongoing cash flow analysis. So that has been one thing that, from a staffing level and the sheer volume of what's occurring right now, developing and creating a cash flow analysis from scratch for all the funds and all the various bank accounts is quite a large task. And so Ken would come in and would review our ledger, review all of our statements for the past year, and would create this cash flow analysis. That would allow him to help aid in our utilization of short-term funds that we have when it comes to tax time, or knowing more closely and forecasting the debt payments or the tax settlement, so we can just better utilize that cash that is currently sitting in the LGIP or one of the liquid pools where we have our funds. So the contract that is in the packet doesn't have a time limit. It has a 30-day written notice to end. So we are, you know, keeping that in, you know, if this isn't something that works, if it's not, you know, it's a little different of an arrangement than our other vendors that we're currently working with. So if it doesn't work for Barb and myself, we'll bring it back to finance and the council and let them know that we're no longer going to continue that contract. EIP operates as with having a charge for a percentage based on assets under management, so that's a monthly charge. Again, we anticipate with the cash flow analysis and the ability to better utilize our funds sitting there, that those investments will help recoup the cost of the fee from the investment earnings. So there's a lot in your packet, presentation, contract, fee schedule, from the Finance Committee. Alderman Gill had requested a sample of the type of reporting and portfolio analysis that they have done for other, another community. So you see blocked-out names and information in your packet, as well as a listing of their other clients, which was another request from the Finance Committee.
Is this a yearly contract, or a two-year, three-year?
There is no limit. It has a 30-day written notice. So because this is a contract that does not have discretion, we have to bring it back to council annually, or is it the other way around? Either way. Sorry.
And then just one other question. Freeze-up staff time, can you expand on it?
We have yet to be able to accomplish the cash flow analysis, so that's really one of the huge benefits in terms of the staff time, but also the reporting. So if we can get a consolidated report, that's one less report that Barb has to generate from the existing other two vendors that we're utilizing.
This was put out to competitive bid?
This was not put out to RFP. This was put out through talking with the Finance Committee and in conjunction with the regulations and the investment policy.
Just to add to that, that's not a process we've ever used.
Ever used it for this?
No, we've never done an RFP for investments.
Other questions?
Mike?
I sat through this presentation, was very good, very useful. I see a lot of, you know, Bridget outlined all the advantages to going with Eller's. And I just remind me, Bridget, if we consolidate the reporting, does that mean we're moving away from BMO and Dana? Are they still on board? I couldn't remember if that...
They are still on board in terms of the, there's the investing services or the advisor services, and then there's what was the custodian. So there's the bank account functions, which is the custodian of holding those investments. The custodian piece is something that we could transition over to EIP if we so chose to. That's what we're working out and trying to make sure that we have the proper fee analysis of what we're currently paying for the custodial services versus what we would pay with EIP. But the reporting feature could happen whether we do the movement of the funds or not. So we can send our statements to Ken, and he will consolidate all the reports in one.
Okay, so where do we see the potential $6,000? Okay, so where do we see the potential $6,000 savings in? Is that part of the consolidation?
That would, would be potentially if we moved all the custodian over to EIP.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion?
Clark will make a motion that the council enter into a contract with Ellers Investment Partners for investment advisory and custodial services.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item twenty-two, resolution, rescinding resolution number 11681021516, and reinstating public depositories the City of Oak Creek. Bridget?
Every year, the city is required to update our list of approved public depositories, which is locations where we are allowed to place our money. So, this is a resolution that you see each year. This year, we are adding or asking you to add TD Bank NA and TD Bank USA NA, and TD Ameritrade Institutional, which are all part of the investment advisory and the custodian with Ellers Investment Partners that we just spoke about. And then, we are also removing Vining Sparks, which was the prior entity that we are no longer working with from the resolution.
Questions? Seeing none, motion?
Clark will make a motion that the council approve resolution number 11817-060617, rescinding resolution number 11681-021516, and restating public depositories for the City of Oak Creek.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Engineering, item twenty-three, is a resolution approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement for Oak Park Assisted Living Development, 1980 West Rossin Avenue. Mike?
So, this is the Oak Park Properties Assisted Living at Twentieth and Rossin, and this is, we seem to have one of these almost every meeting now, which is the standard stormwater maintenance agreement, which provides that the property owner takes care of their detention pond and other stormwater management facilities. And if they don't, it does allow for the city to take care of it and then seek reimbursement for those costs.
Questions? Comments? Motion?
Clark will make a motion that the council adopts resolution number 11819-060617, a resolution approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with Oak Park Properties, Oak Creek LLC, 719 Jupiter Drive, Madison, Wisconsin, 53718, for their development at 1980 West Rossin Avenue, tax key number 736-8995-001.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Continuing in engineering, consider a motion to enter into a contract with Short Elliott Hendrickson Engineering, Inc., at a cost not to exceed $42,100 to provide construction inspection services for this year's bridge maintenance project. Mike, you're going to elaborate when you're ready?
I will.
Did I get ahead of you?
I will, and I, and I, I'm going to steal hers because I got out of sequence, so. I'm looking for number twenty-four. Okay, sorry about that. Yes. Last meeting, the council awarded the bridge maintenance contract to Xenitec. They're going to do repairs to six bridges here in the city. Awarded a contract in the, in the neighborhood of $668,000, I believe that the total was. But at any rate, there is a need for some fairly extensive construction inspection as this work takes place. And so, we were looking to hire the services of a, of an engineering firm that specializes in this, in this type of inspection. And Short Elliott Hendrickson, they actually were the designers of the project. We asked them for a submittal. There is some work, I think, that we can handle with our in-house staff, but we are spread kind of thin with our larger road project this year and our involvement with the Lake Vista Park project as well. So, really are looking that, that they would do the lion's share of the, of the construction inspection and the documentation, the quantity measurement for, for payments. Asked them for a proposal. They seem to have a good understanding of what the, what the scope is, and we felt comfortable making the recommendation that they help us with this work. They had proposed a not-to-exceed contract, $42,100. Again, if we can get it done for, you know, we'll keep a tight monitoring of that to make sure that their time is well spent on site. And if, if there's work that's not too intense, that maybe we can cover that ourselves. But at any rate, that, that's kind of what we're looking for here to get them under contract as, as the work proceeds here, probably later on this month even, that we would be prepared for that.
Mike? Questions, comments from the council? Seeing none, motion?
Kowski will make a motion, council approves a motion that, approves a motion to enter into a contract with Short Elliott Hendrickson Engineering, Inc., at to exceed $42,100 to provide construction inspection services for this year's bridge maintenance project.
Clark will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Item twenty-five, consideration of a resolution approving Storage Shop USA LLC Sanitary Development Agreement for the Design and Installation of Public Improvements at 331-401 East Oak. Mike, do you have this one?
Yes, this is a development agreement that would cover the sanitary sewer that is required for the facility. It is not a public sewer, but it is a, what's termed a private interceptor sewer, in that it's a, a private sewer that will have laterals off to several buildings. The reason that it, it needs to be covered by a development agreement because that, that will, that provides that it will be designed to city and MMSD standards, and it goes through all that proper permitting, and it is inspected as it is constructed. And the development agreement further provides that the developer pays the cost of the city inspection as that is installed.
Questions? Comments? At planning, we did have a brief discussion over this. We had a resident come in, and there's an existing sewer that's rather deep. Commissioner Johnson told us he was rather worried about them hitting it. Commissioner Johnson assured him it's, it's rather deep. It goes back a few years.
Yes, and if there was any conflicts, we, we, we're going to review these plans as they come in, and, and, you know, that would, that would come to light. We'll make sure that everything looks good and is approvable.
Thank you. Motion?
Kowski will make a motion that council adopts resolution number 11827-060617, which would approve the Storage Shop USA Sanitary Development Agreement for the Design and Installation of Public Improvements at 331 and 401 East Oak Street, tax key number 733-0008-000, and 733-0009-000, project number 17055.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Community development concerning the same property, consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map for the properties at 331 and 401 East Oak Street. Doug?
Put it in its most simplest terms, there are two properties there. The CSM would combine those into one conforming property for the zoning.
Questions, comments from council? Motion?
Kowski will make a motion that council adopts resolution number 11818-060617, approving a certified survey map for the properties at 331 and 401 East Oak Street.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item twenty-seven, consideration of a resolution approving modifications to Declaration, Covenants, Conditions, Restrictions, and Easements for Drexel Town Square. Got this one. Doug or Andrew?
I'll take it.
Doug?
So, many of you recall that the, all the private parcels within Drexel Town Square are bound by a declaration of restrictions. And when the city purchased its parcel from West Park by virtue of our, I guess, our unique situation, we were not bound by those conditions and restrictions. Remember as well that the city purchased a property and through the design process was able to really contain the bulk of the civic center onto or within one city block, which freed up some additional land to the, to our east that is now under contract with the Water Group for Senior Living Development. And in the process of consummating that transaction, the, that property, given that it's not a city property anymore, needed to be brought into the fold of those conditions and restrictions, those declarations of restrictions, with a few notable exceptions. And those exceptions were that the lots within Drexel Town Square all are kind of bound by, or for the most part are bound by a shared parking arrangement. Given the, again, the unique nature of this as a senior housing development, with the bulk of that being developed underground, it really wasn't feasible nor desirable to have that same shared parking arrangement that we had with other, between other users at Drexel Town Square. So, essentially, we don't have those same cross easements that we would have, for example, with some of the wired buildings, with some of the other commercial buildings there. And I thought that was it. It subjects them to the same requirements with respect to approval by the OWD Board for architectural and site improvements, which they already have been approved. Also, subjects them to the same rules as the other properties with respect to the payment of association fees.
Thank you, Doug. Comments, questions from the council? Seeing none, motion?
Clark will make a motion that the council adopt resolution number 11822-060617, resolution approving the modification to Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, Restrictions, and Easements for Drexel Town Square.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item twenty-eight, it's a resolution approving a certified survey map for Jerry Cousins All-Star Honda at 7008 and 718 South 27th Street and 2500 West Rossin Avenue. Doug?
Sure. The, this property, these, actually, these properties were the subject of a resoning in conditional use approval for an automotive dealership. And as part of the process for, that will lead up to the approval of site and building plans by the Plan Commission, these multiple properties needed to be combined into one. The CSM accomplishes that.
Yes?
Arden Dagnar, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. To me, this is an ideal time for sidewalks to be put in this area of Rossin Ave, to meet the sidewalk, complete sidewalking that not only South Milwaukee has, but the city of Franklin.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Dagnar. Questions and comments from commission? Steve?
Mike or Doug, you may not know the answer to this question, but I'll ask it anyways. On the, on the corner right there where Spice Two is now, used to be, I understand that property is owned by the state, is there any possibility that the Honda dealership would acquire some of that for decorative purposes or something like that, instead of being what will be like the other two corners across the street?
I mean, that's a great question. I mean, it is owned by the state and was acquired as part of the right-of-way project. And there is a very separate and distinct process for the disposition of state real estate, and they have to go through that process. The access for that property has been totally purchased by the state. So, someone in, in theory could bid for that property, knowing that they don't have access. I don't know why they would. So, given that set of facts, the most likely purchaser of that property would be the automotive dealership. They have certainly expressed an interest in doing that, and they also have expressed an interest, Steve, to your point, of really making that into a community gateway feature with landscaping and some other types of mutually agreed-upon design elements that the Plan Commission will be reviewing as part of the site plan approval.
Thank you. Else? Just to bring you up to speed, planning, did, did look at the plans. They're work, they're working further with the applicant on, on some features of the building and roadway and things of that nature. So, we'll be coming back around, just to give you a heads-up on it. As for now, it's really just a certified survey map. So, seeing nothing, motion?
Clark will make a motion that the council adopts resolution number 11823-060617, approving a certified survey map for the properties at 7008 and 7018 South 27th Street and 2500 West Rossin Avenue.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item twenty-nine, consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map for the properties at 1901 and 1941 East Rossin. Doug?
Sure. Michael Friede of Venture Space LLC is requesting approval of the CSM for the properties at 1901 and 1941 East Rossin. Lot one, as proposed, would be 4.34 acres, would be purchased by a self-storage developer or self-storage facility. Lot two, which would be 5.6 acres, would be developed by the applicant with a commercial condominium facility. Important to note that those types of uses have not been approved for those properties yet. Those would come under separate applications for each of those lots, but this CSM would create the parcels for that. So, each lot would meet the minimum lot size and with requirements for the new LM1 Light Manufacturing zoning district. There are some easements that are depicted on the map, as well as a wetland delonation that needs to be scheduled, and it would be, at the time of the authorship, was scheduled to be conducted in the next few weeks. Those wetlands would need to be shown on the CSM prior to recording. Also important to note that access to the site is controlled by Milwaukee County, Rossin Avenue, being a county facility, and all permits need to be provided from, for access through Rossin Avenue to the Department of Community Development and Engineering Department as part of any site plan approval.
Is that it, Doug? Is that it? Before we open it up to council, we do have a couple of speakers. Brandon, Brandon Von Vors?
I'm Lonnie Benning, 7254 South Delane Drive. I'm president of the Camelot Trails Condominium Association, which is to the southeast, butts this land up, according about eight of our homes. We, I represent ninety homeowners in our condominium association. I'm, I'm asking that this, that, it was two weeks ago, LM1 was passed by the Planning Commission, and we have, I'm asking that it be returned to the Planning Commission for improper legal notice. The map that was provided to our ninety homeowners showed that this land was all before these two, that was involved in the rezoning. The mayor, Mr. Mayor, answered some of our residents at the time that it was already before, and that the land, according to, on our boundaries would, could already be McDonald's and a bowling alley, to use a quote. And it's not. It's A1 zoning. And this week, we went to the city hall and we got the maps, and it is not depicted properly. And if anybody wants to see it, this is what was sent out. And this, this is what it actually is. The land along our borders is A1 zoning. It is depicted on what came out. All of our owners thought it was already before. That was how it was depicted. That was how it was depicted during the Planning Commission meeting, and it is not. We also have documentation of six homeowners who bought, some as late as, as early as nine months ago, were not notified. Apparently, the names are, the addresses and the names of the owners was not up to date. So it was improper notification. We'd like this to come back. We'd also like the Planning Commission to consider that this was a buffer, a natural buffer that was already there, that the prior Planning Commission many years ago determined that the B4 zoning did not come back as far as our properties. We were told by Carrie at the time that it was very unusual, highly unusual, that there would be zoning, rezoning done before there were any plans, any idea that, especially since the lot that, I know this would be put into one parcel and then divided in half, which is now going to be apparently Lot One and Lot Two. And Lot, the Lot facing our, bypassing on our property has never been discussed as to what would go there before the rezoning. We are, we have not, we had a, we had a board meeting last night for our homeowners association. We had about 50 people there. We had no idea this meeting was held. Luckily, I had left some messages. Thank you very much to Alderman Kirkowski, who called me this afternoon to return my call. And at 4:30, I found out that this meeting was held, it was going to be held tonight at 7 o'clock. We did not receive proper notification. And if you take a look at the map, you'll see that it is marked as B4. And if you take a look, here is the, here is the map right here. Here is our property, here's our property right here. This is CT. I should do it from the north so that you guys can see it from the north. Here is our entire property. This whole area here is the recreational, it's RS4 that surrounds Camelot Park. And this is all along our property line here. This is us right here. Along our property line and all of this is A1. That is not how it was depicted on our legal notice.
You are correct. That is a different map than we seen at planning. Doug, do you have any comments? Did you discuss this in planning?
I do not see the legal notice in front of me, so I can't comment on that, other than to say that the public hearing would be before the common council, that anything that would be noticed in front of the Plan Commission would be advisory. There's no statutory responsibility to do that. But obviously, we'd want to make sure that the information that's provided is correct, and we'll review that to make sure that, that we will get the right information out if there is an error. I think what might have been, and then again, without reviewing the actual legal notice, what might have happened is that some of the confusion might have been given the, the identification of the subject property might have given the perception that that zoning extended all the way back, but we'll, we'll take a look at it.
It certainly did at planning. It, it did go all the way back to
Yeah.
P1 property, I think, as well as depicted. So, I mean, if we were in error of the map and planning committee informed that, I would recommend we hold and send it back.
Here's, I have an extra copy of the legal notice if you'd like it.
We'll, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
I, I would move to hold it. I can't make a motion.
And how do we, how do we assure that, I know we have about six of the new owners that are in there because they're selling real quickly now, but a lot of these were from last fall. How do we, how do we get them to make sure that they get the notices? They're not getting them.
Again, by ordinance, it's 300 feet.
That information, if I may, is provided to us by Milwaukee County. So that is the best information that's available to us at the time.
Okay.
But certainly, if you know that there are new owners there, we would encourage you to spread that word, or I mean, if you can even give us the mailing address of those owners, we'll be happy to add them to the list.
Well, I can do that. Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you. Steve?
Mayor, we still have one more person who wants to comment.
Well, actually, we have two more. Come on up. We don't want to cut you off.
Hello, my name is Brandon Van Vors at 7263 South Delane Drive. I'm going to go over what, what Lonnie said as well. I went to the city and found that these zonings are not properly marked presently. And so we need to give it back to the Planning Commission. We can't, we should not go forward with this. Because I can, I can show you on the maps, talking to the city at length, and I'll, I'll talk to the zoning administrator as well, Steve, about this buffer that, that's natural, it's a natural buffer, buffer that's agriculture, that needs to stay there. It has a lot of wildlife.
We have, you know, we won't move forward on an assumption like this when we have this sort of confusion.
Okay. And then according to Chapter 17, Section 171013I, it's the city's responsibility to protect existing potential property values and preserve the beauty of the community in that area. And so I just urge the council to, to put that in consideration. This isn't the same as a lot of other places. This is a, it should be a land reserve. There's a lot of wildlife and a lot of wetlands back there that aren't legal to build on even by the state standard. And so we'd like to request an environmental study, a certified survey map to look at the area before moving forward.
Go ahead, Doug.
To be clear, this is a request for land division or re-division. I think a lot of those questions that you're asking are appropriate, certainly as a prelude to the public hearing for any rezoning of the property. And if you would please, if you want to leave those with me, I'd be happy to investigate those. And some of those, and zoning, you're right, is a discretionary matter based on the comprehensive plan of the common council. And if there are statutory or regulatory restrictions against the development of a certain portion of the property, be it by conservation easement or through wetlands, the development would need to conform to those. And I guess respectfully, given the current use of the property is no indication or guarantee that, that buffer that you've enjoyed over any number of years would continue to operate, it's, it's really a discretionary matter in accordance with the zoning that's put in place by the common council in accordance with the comprehensive plan.
And then I would like to see what the plans are, like, I think her, the lady that was sitting here before.
Carrie. And she did say it's unusual, but, but it's not inappropriate either.
I also am concerned about the safety of the area as well with that, with that property coming in, if there isn't the buffer between that. But again, I'll talk to the zoning administrator and our councilman, Alderman, to go further.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments. Kimberly? Kimberly Van Vors?
Kimberly Van Vors, 7263 South Delane Drive. I was the individual that you spoke with about, you know, the McDonald's stretching back and the bowling alley, which I'm sure if you were provided the proper map like I was, you probably wouldn't have made that comment because that was inaccurate. Because the property that stretches back is the A1 agricultural property, not the B4. And so as, as I understand, the zoning decision has been made that it's been changed to an L1, is that correct?
It's a recommendation. It all happens here.
Okay, so it hasn't, it hasn't gone official as it's officially an L1, correct?
Correct. It's a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the common council. This board actually does that.
So is there still going to be a public hearing on the decision to make it an L1?
We will go through the entire process again and again, make sure we're correct in which map we're looking at and why it was depicted that way. I don't have an answer for you, but congratulations, good investigative work, group. So you stopped us from making what potentially is a big mistake. So again, that's why we have these meetings. That's why we invite public comment. So basically, we'd probably start the process all over.
Yeah, and I, I do apologize. I wish I would have done the investigative work before the recommendation hearing that had took in place because we would have had it ready, ready to go at that time. So I mean, I guess it's almost irresponsible in my mind to make that recommendation at this point because it was improper information.
We're not going to, we're going to hold it.
Okay, okay.
And send it back so we have it.
For more investigation, okay. Okay.
I take it you want to speak. Come on up, come on up. Name and address, please.
Nice to see you again. Michael Friedy with Venture Space, 4191 Lakeland Drive in Neshora. I hear all the questions and concerns about the rezoning. It's my understanding that what's on the agenda for tonight is the CSM, which is not related to the zoning. So I'll just ask that the common council approve the new CSM, which will actually, you know, make two conforming lots, because right now I think one of them is not. So, you know, because the property is two lots, one of them is not conforming. So this CSM is simply addressing, making two conforming lots. And that I understand that we will be on the agenda for July 18th to address the zoning because there wasn't something published correctly.
You're, you're correct, but given the discrepancy in the map, because when, when you came in from planning, it was approved all the way back to that P1 lot. Oh, well, it was depicted.
Sure.
So the decision was based on how deep those lots went. We really have to get a ruling as to which map we're dealing with now. We have two maps, so.
But, but that zoning, not, not the CSM.
But again, it, we're not talking, possibly, we're talking about, even though the properties are physically the same, side by side, lengthwise, they may vary in it, may affect the decision of planning going forward. I, I would like to know which map we're dealing with. My recommend, I don't have a say in, in this. We don't have that tonight, but I would recommend to hold till we have the facts. Council?
I, I have some comments, if I may.
Steve?
I did have a, a nice conversation with Lonnie earlier today. She brought to my attention, she did give me naps. And I do notice a discrepancy, at least as we've already discussed, that there's property A1, it's not all B4. And I know we want to change it to LM1, so I think there's discrepancy here that need to go back all the way to the beginning. I know you're going to provide some addresses to, from your homeowners association for a potential public meeting. Just to make sure everything's covered, I know we have the ability to ask for 600 feet with regards to the public notices being sent out versus the 300 feet, so.
You can certainly advise and request any.
Oh, we can go anywhere. Well, I'm, I'm at least going to have 600 feet, but if the homeowners association wants to provide address labels for the entire association, then, you know, I would certainly concur with that. I, I am bothered by the fact that the developer wants to do this to this property and then have it purchased by a self-storage developer after the fact. I mean, normally, we have all the stuff in place before we do all this rezoning. So, you know, we're going to rezone something and then all of a sudden, this purchaser may back out. I'm also concerned about the usage of part of the property as a commercial condominium facility and some of the businesses that that may draw with regards to its location near somewhat dense residential area. However, and you've asked for plans and stuff like that, so feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, folks, but the reason on the property, they come back with their, their, all their plans, you know, as you heard tonight, we have all these businesses that, that get these conditional use permits because they've gone through the process, they've submitted the plans, and everybody gets to see how things are built. And we're not at that stage yet, so don't, don't worry that you don't see it yet because they all have to come here or to planning and say, this is what we want to do. And then if it doesn't meet code, then they go back and forth, back and forth, much like the other storage facility. And I would make the strong suggestion to you, sir, is that they had community meetings to have the neighbors come in and show exactly what they wanted to do. They worked out any differences before it came to a final say. So I think I would, I'll make a motion that we, we place this item on hold until we straighten this all out, and then we come back and we, we start from square one. And sir, you, you get that same address list from the community, from the homeowners association, and start working with them to make them happy, and then you keep an open mind of what they want to do, and then we try and make it all work. So, okay, it's a lot to be done yet, so don't, don't think we're just going to jump in and let, let anybody do anything like this. So.
Mayor, if you need a motion? Yes, but if you could, please put a date to it when they have to be back nearby with that map so we can try to accommodate all parties. July, I'm sorry, July. What would we be looking at?
Doug, what would you suggest as a date? Because I don't want to.
Back, I'm sorry, to come back before the, the common council?
Yeah, yeah, it, I mean, we want it on the next planning agenda, if, if we can get it.
Given the fact that there's some, a, a common council meeting that won't take place in July, rather than giving you a date right now, I'd prefer to go back and schedule it out on a calendar, just so I'm not giving incorrect information.
Yeah, we have one meeting July 18th, in July, so.
Yeah, I, I would try to make it as soon as possible to accommodate everybody as possible. I mean, the, the big thing in question, first of all, is the map.
We have a legal requirement as how many days in advance the residents have to be told about the meeting? Could we shoot then for the first council meeting in August, and that would give all of July to?
Again, rather than to speculate, we'll just schedule it out on a calendar, given the statutory requirements for notification, and we'll establish a new hearing date for that, if, if it's required. And, I mean, we'll take into advisement all the information that was provided this evening. And, I mean, if it's required, we will, we will republish.
Keep in mind, if, if planning did go off the same map, the recommendation would stand if the map they looked at was correct.
That's why I prefer not to speculate and to.
Right, but it, it could go, you don't know, at this point, you don't know which map's correct.
Right.
Okay, well, with that, Kirkowski will make a motion to hold item 29 on the agenda pending a resolution or a meeting by the Plan Commission to resolve the zoning issues on the property that is listed on item 29, which would be 1901 and 1941 East Rossin Avenue.
Gudzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gudzakowski?
Aye.
Okay. Held, we'll figure it out. License Committee. Steve, you're on.
Got all my stuff aside here. All right, the License Committee met on May 10th, 2017. Minutes were approved at the May 16th council meeting. Recommendations are as follows. Kirkowski, on item 30, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant renewal alcoholic beverage licenses for the period of July 1st, 2017 through July 30th, 2018, with issuance subject to payment of any fees due and department approvals as listed to the large number of establishments listed on the agenda.
Steve, I think you got to amend it. It should have been June.
Oh, did, what did I say? I said July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018?
Oh.
Well, I'm sorry, if that's not what I said, that's what I meant.
Motion's been amended. Gudzakowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gudzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
31 is Kirkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the 19 individuals listed on the agenda. Favorable reports were received.
Gudzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gudzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
32, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant amusement operator and amusement device licenses to the six companies listed on the agenda.
Gudzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman? Alderman, Toman.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Thirty-three, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a temporary Class B beer license to Christian Owaleski, agent Oak Creek Tourism Commission for the Milwaukeefood.com food truck tour, June 21st, August 2nd, August 20th, and September 20th, 2017.
Kuzakowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
And item 34, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a special event permit to Jill Lininger for a summer reading kickoff party to be held on Friday, June 16th, 2017, in Drexel Town Square.
Kuzakowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Miscellaneous, we will now entertain a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent G, to consider the proposed settlement with Trappers 1 LLC and Trappers 2 LLC regarding the city's 2015 tax assessment of the property located at 10441 South Nicholson Road. B, Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent E, to discuss strategy relating to the upcoming labor contract negotiations. C, Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent C, 19.85, Parent 1, Parent F, 19.85, Parent 1, Parent G, to discuss the application for 4.40.65 duty disability benefits for Dean A. Marari. I take it Ken's not here. Counsel President?
Kirkowski will make a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, Sections 19.85, Parents 1, Parent G, to consider a proposed settlement with Trappers 1 LLC and Trappers 2 LLC regarding the city's 2015 tax assessment of the property located at 10441 South Nicholson Road. B, Section 19.85, Parents 1, Parent E, to discuss strategy relating to upcoming labor contract negotiations, and C, Sections 19.85, Parents 1, Parent C, 19.85, Parents 1, Parent F, and 19.85, Parents 1, Parent G, to discuss the application for 40.65 duty disability benefits filed by Dean A. Marari.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
We'll now convene into closed session. We will return to open session and take action if required.
Make a motion to reconvene into open session.
Kuzakowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Consider a motion on first item in closed session.
Kirkowski will make a motion to, that the common council approve a proposed settlement with Trappers 1 LLC and Trappers 2 LLC, as stated in the recommendation provided by the city attorney.
Kuzakowski, second. Are we good, Melissa?
I would just add regarding the city's 2015 tax assessment of the property located at 10441 South Nicholson Road.
Regarding the city's 2015 tax assessment of the property located at 10441 South Nicholson Road.
Second.
Second, I'm on to, okay.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
We will also entertain a motion on item C.
Toman will make a motion to certify the duty disability of Dean A. Marari and to approve the settlement on the terms that were negotiated.
Kuzakowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Thank you, good night. We'd like to thank everybody that attended or watched at home. Again, enjoy the rest of the week and get out there, explore and discover Old Creek. Thank you.